I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
All right, I'd like to welcome Pete Mayo with the Christiast extension.
Kind of irreverent public input here we got. Let us pray. Blessed are you, Lord our God, eternal Father. We ask for your blessing this evening. We bring the needs of our community before you and ask your assistance in addressing them. As we see the summer fade and the seasons change, we ask you to protect our city from the dangers of threatening weather. Keep us safe with special care for the most vulnerable among us. We take great interest in and responsibility for our community. Grant us the wisdom and courage to speak out when it's time to speak out and listen receptively when it's time to listen. May our thoughts and words begin with kindness and then be guided by care for our common good, our community, justice, and love. We pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy. Amen.
Thank you, Pete.
Thanks, Hugh.
All right, I'd like to open public input if there's anyone would like to come up and state your name, address, and you have five minutes to speak. All right, same then closing public input.
I got a follow-up to the last commission meeting we had regarding Josiah overpass. I met recently with Commissioner Tom Moody, County Council Jim Emerson, and Mayor Frontac Dave Finelli. They're hiring a engineer to take a look at the bridge and see what are some of the issues, if there's any. They had that bridge inspected like they said every two years. It was inspected in February fifteenth of 2020, and it got a good inspection then, but they're they're going to see what what maybe needs fixed, and they're going to take care of it. So I just thought I'd share that with everybody and let them know.
So I gather that you're saying that in 2020 that the bridge was inspected and felt to be safe?
Yes, they got a good rating in 2022.
Two years, it's two years of the point where it's not safe anymore?
No, I'm not saying the bridge has some of the approaches on it that they're looking at, and they will look at the overall structure of the bridge. The engineer will see determine if nothing's changed since that time.
All right, thank you. All right, I'd like to ask Lou Ann Collier to come forward. I'd like to read a proclamation.
I'm with her. Yes, thank you. All right, Project Warmth is a community effort that has been in existence for over 30 years. On Thursday, October 20th, 2022, from 11:00 to 2:00 and from 4:30 to 5:00, citizens may visit the lower level of the Memorial Auditorium Convention Center and enjoy a bowl of chili soup and a slice of homemade pie to support this worthy cause. Reaching the annual goal would not be possible without the generous support of local businesses who donate their time and products to make this event successful. We ask our community to support this effort and to assist our neighbors in Crawford County with utility payments during the winter months. Now, therefore, I Cheryl Brooks, Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh, Kansas, do bid for a claim October 20th, 2022 as Project Warmth Day in Pittsburgh, and urge all citizens to attend this important fundraiser to help our fellow citizens.
Do you hear this? Go right ahead.
She said, I am Lou Ann Collier. This is Pete Mayo, and we've both been involved with Project Warmth for many years. It is our 35th annual Project Warmth, and we are excited to be back in person this year. And on behalf of the Pittsburgh Ministerial Alliance and the Project Warmth Committee, we'd like to thank Mayor Brooks, our city commissioners, and the City of Pittsburgh for recognizing the importance of this day. With rising prices, the inflation, the need is going to be even greater this year, and so we hope that we'll have a great turnout and that she will support your citizens. As Cheryl said, it is Thursday, October 20th. We'll serve from 11:00 to 2:00. You can eat in the Memorial Auditorium or can take out. It's a great time for business owners and managers to show their appreciation to their employees. I do a lot of to-go orders for different businesses, and it's just a great way to say thank you to your employees and then support other citizens in Crawford County. And then we'll do takeout only from 4:30 to 5:00. It's $10 a serving. We'll have either chili, potato soup,
Potato soup, yeah.
and homemade pie. A lot of our churches, they, ladies and gentlemen, support us by making pies that are incredible. And so come out and join us, and hopefully you'll start seeing some of these flyers around town.
Volunteer if you like as well. We can always use volunteers, and it's a good community building event.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for your support.
Okay, before we move on to the consent agenda, I would like to make a motion for the governing body, Darren Hall and Henry Minginny, to go into executive session for a period of 15 minutes for the purpose to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of second parties such as corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships according to KSA 754319B4. The open meeting will resume in the commission room in 15 minutes. Do I have a second?
A second to motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
I mean, Darren and Henry, do you know what this is about?
No.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Three, four, and so we're going to go into executive session, and we'll be in there for approximately I have to wait for her to come back.
No, you can you can.
Okay, we're back, and no decisions were made, no votes were cast. And we give Don just a second here. Let me give her one minute. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed? Anyone?
None.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Stu?
Second.
Seconded by Chuck. Roll call, huh?
Brooks, yes.
Height?
Yes.
McNay?
Yes.
Mansell?
Yes.
Siggly?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, public hearing. Public hearing, property tax abatement, Atkinson Industries Incorporated. The City of Pittsburgh advertised for a public hearing to be held October the 11th, 2022, at the City Commission meeting commencing at 5:30 PM in the City Commission Room located in the Law Enforcement Center 201 North Pine to consider the request for a tax abatement submitted by Atkinson Industries Incorporated. Good evening, Blake.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the commission. This is a public hearing, as you mentioned, for a property tax exemption request received from AZZ Atkinson Industries. This request was considered by the Economic Development Advisory Committee, or EDAC, a couple of months ago. It's related to a major expansion of their Pittsburgh facility. I'm going to ask Jeremy Hoffman, who's the local leader at AZZ, to come up and talk about the the expansion itself. I will tell you that the EDAC issued a favorable recommendation for this based on the company's anticipated investment of $2 million. That would qualify them for a seven-year exemption, and I always want to make sure when people are watching that they don't think that the company won't pay property taxes after that. It essentially freezes the company's property tax rate at what they're paying now, even though they'll be adding the expansion. So it gives them time to recoup some of those costs. They submitted a cost-benefit analysis that shows it's a it's a good project for the community. So with that, I'll ask Jeremy to come up and tell you a little bit more about the company and also the project.
No applause? Thanks, Blake. So as he mentioned, my name is Jeremy Hoffman. I usually don't stand at podiums. I like to walk around. So if I start to move, it's it's not that I'm nervous. It's just like this is like you lose connection with people being this far away. No, so I've actually been at the organization for almost four years, and so we we've been investing just in the business quite a bit in just my time. We spent about $500,000 on a laser a couple of years ago to really increase some output. We had an opportunity that we've been working on for over a year to to go after a very large battery energy storage project that was a 350-megawatt farm serving a customer out in California. And when we got that opportunity and then secured the order, we have been discussing for probably two years about expanding, you know, our manufacturing footprint at the at the facility there. When we got this order, it was we've got to do it. So we'll be producing roughly three times the amount of revenue this year that we did the previous year. So, you know, if you're in business, that's 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 pretty big accomplishment. So the team's done pretty well so far in that. But that's kind of the basis behind why we really started is we took a really, a really large project and needed this expansion and would like to do this type of business in the future. So if you guys pay attention to markets right now, renewable is a pretty hot ticket, right? You're getting a lot of funding from it from the government, and it's a lot cleaner, I'll say, right? So just to give you a little bit of background on what we do, so we we actually have facilities in Pittsburgh, Kansas, obviously, and Millington, Maryland, and in Chattanooga, Tennessee. We actually have two very, very similar products, but the Pittsburgh, Kansas one is the longest one in tenure, so 103 years in business overall. Do exactly kind of the same product from electrical to industrial to oil and gas specialty applications. And again, this project specifically that drove it was in the renewable market. So just geography wise, we, you know, really serve a majority of the infrastructure, as you well know, started on the East Coast. So even though we're a pretty old country, a lot of the infrastructure is still there. So that's why we have a facility in Maryland that serves a lot of the infrastructure, and then again in Chattanooga. Anything pretty much west of the Mississippi, the Pittsburgh facility ships to. So again, this project being in California, as I was talking with a young lady on the news conference that I got, you know, didn't know about, and things Zach set me up and Blake did too. But it's it's pretty impressive to think that, you know, 3.9 miles from here, you know, we're producing 122 enclosures to go all the way to California to to provide 350 megawatt hours of renewable energy to to some customers out there. We also serve and sold to Everji before locally, and but a pretty, pretty, I think, a very cool thing for people that just don't realize, you know, what's going on. And I know occasionally And I know occasionally we like to take out lights, you know, with our buildings and stuff, but, you know, it's not on purpose. No, please forgive us for that. We do try not to make a scene in that. But we do just reference that building, 75,000 pounds. It's over 15 feet tall, over 12 feet wide, and 55 feet long. So it's a challenge just to get them all out of the city, much less all the way to California, so.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
Is the route changed that once they leave your plant? It used to go down South Route, now I've seen a lot of them going down Broadway. Why is that?
You know, that's a good question. We actually have been asking our freight vendors, Zach, because they are ones responsible for getting, you know, the route set through the process. So we actually have reached out, Blake put us in contact with somebody that we can reach out to and make sure they're doing the exact route that you guys would like to see. But we didn't have this problem for years.
Well, it's not going through the cones on South Route where the.
Yeah.
It's not going through there, so there's construction is probably why.
Yeah, and the bridge at one point in time, but yeah, so. But we are actively making sure they're reaching out to the city and saying.
Yeah, I think if there's something else they could do, Broadway wouldn't be the main thoroughfare.
Yeah, I agree with that. You know, unfortunately, you know, we just run into route restrictions in general, so.
Sure.
It's a freight is probably the freight in states, you know, if you think about running a business, you know, who would even think about that? Freight in states just causes ruckus all the time, so do apologize for that, but it isn't something we do on purpose. So again, you guys should all know where we're at. This was an older slide. We're now over 150 on the headcount. Do everything there, engineer, quote it, estimate, sales, just shoot, procure. So everything's done at that facility. We don't outsource any of our design. We don't outsource anything. So that building that's being shipped out there was completely designed inside the Pittsburgh city limits, so I think that's pretty unique as well. We do have a low bay production area. Again, most of you, I think, went out to our 100 years celebration. We have a high bay production area where we can actually lift up to 100,000 pounds with 32-foot pick heights. We actually can segregate our customer storage, so we get a lot of customer equipment shipped into us that we integrate into buildings. So you can kind of see a little bit of a picture of that. I'm trying to get through this faster because I think in the economic meetings, you know, we talked for a while, so. Here's the laser. So that's a 6,000-watt laser, so pretty cool. If you don't know what that is, just know it's pretty cool. The automatic load and unload, so an employee can load a pallet, safely get back on the machine, machine does all the work, and out comes your nice product in the end. So that was probably, I'd say, our first major investment over the past three years before this one. Markets served, obviously, battery energy storage, power generation, renewables, pretty much anything you could see that would need a building, we could put a roof over it and integrate the gear inside of it. Used to do quite a bit of telecom buildings, obviously, the history. 20 years after Atkinson started mining, imagine that around here, they supported the mining industry quite a bit. So we still do that, but on a very, very, very small basis. So the majority is in power gen, transmission, distribution, and renewables side. Products, geez, again, just pretty impressive. If you walk away with what does, you know, Atkinson Industries do, every order is engineered to order custom one-off usually. That's our MO, so we don't make cookie cutter type things up until this order anyway. So you can see some pictures there. We'll do everything from operator centers to custom control enclosures, to power switch gear systems, again, the battery systems. Our facility in Chattanooga, Tennessee is actually serving Facebook, so our data center market, so we can even serve that. Matter of fact, Facebook is coming in for an audit for our facility to hopefully award some of us business that's going west of the Mississippi. So, you know, those sort of things are, you know, kind of the emerging markets. Again, strategy-wise, you know, what's not up here is the one thing we do try to, I always tell people, is that I want people to fear our business, right? I say, well, that's a bad thing. It's like, I want the employees to hear that's a great place to work and like, oh my gosh, you know, we're going to lose employees to, you know, Atkinson, right? Because mainly that's our goal. I want someone's grandkid to be able to, you know, retire from that business. Too many businesses right now are outsourcing, you know, looking at the cheapest way to do things, and that's just not our MO. We really want to be here for the long haul. So anyway, outside of that from the strategy is really to grow the battery energy markets, the data center markets, you know, the BESs market, renewable market right now is like $5 billion over the next three years, with a lot of that coming from funding, you know, that's already been approved by the government. So you have some very large developers, you know. There's a couple few people that you may know that do invest in, unless somebody got any Buffett, I think, maybe invest in renewables. So it's a pretty, I think, pretty good return on investment for most developers. Business needs, you know, right now, it's higher as many as you can find, right? I mean, we're at record backlogs, so I actually have responsibility for all three facilities. I just choose to stay here because I like Pittsburgh best. I would probably say that if I was in Chattanooga, their city council, so just be real, no. But we're three times the backlog we had at this time about a year and a half ago. So it's just amazing that the industry, right? So I'm not going to get myself boxed about inflation and all that good stuff, but it is nice to see a very, very solid backlog. So we have a lot of months in front of us of consecutive work. So hiring 20, if I could hire 40 and train them tomorrow, we'd hire them. So that number's kind of low, but was what we needed intentionally to do with the business. So outside of that, the outside footprint is really what we needed. So we laid a whole lot of concrete, competed a little bit with someone else over here, FedEx taking some of our concrete, that's okay. We shared pretty well, and we got all that done about a month and a half ago. It's already 95% utilized, meaning there's product on it already. We developed the infrastructure electrically so that we could actually take and expand the facility in the future, so that's a good step we made. So just ordering all sorts of really neat stuff to help support the project to the point of like about $2 million. And to put that into reference, you know, we spend about $500,000 a year, you know, on averaging capital over the past three to four years, other than the major expansions that you guys are well aware of that Atkinson has done, so. So again, I kind of sometimes talk to slides before they show up, so I apologize for that, but that means, you know, at least what's in the slides. But yeah, we took that really, really large project. Again, it's the largest battery energy storage site in the U.S., and we got a chance to provide 122 buildings, so very impressive, really. You know, it's a record order for our company, you know, and just it's a neat market to be a part of. So again, we really needed the expansion, which we did. You know, we didn't wait to get this approved and say, oh, we're not going to spend any money, you know. This is something we really wanted to do for a while, so appreciate the opportunity. To give a little bit of a layout, so that's a beautiful overhead of Atkinson. So if you were to, unfortunately, now I do need to move, so I apologize, I'm going to go over your head. We, does anybody know about the soil condition in this area? So we wanted to do all this. Unfortunately, we spent the same amount of money, but only got to do really from here over. Just had to do a little bit more excavating than we wanted to, a little bit more compaction. But we got 80% of what we wanted done and 90% of the electrical done, but still ended up spending the same amount of money on that side of it. So again, what that allows us to do is the electrical infrastructure is in place, the concrete's there, and now we can just slowly start to also house that concrete if we need to in the future. Again, right now, there is over $7 million of product for the customer setting on that new expansion, so it was a huge, huge event for us. We also purchased, shoot, multiple pieces of forklift equipment, electrical testing, the little combi-lift there on the right, really cool, very expensive, but very cool, it can adjust accesses on a dime. So it isn't just the concrete, we've been investing quite a bit in the business. Tooling, yeah, all that good stuff. So we get to the, what are you even talking about? Well, that's actually 122 of those are going to make their way across the U.S. there to mid-northern California. Kind of just to show you the, and again, I'll walk for a second. The other really cool thing about this is, so the sister facility that we run, they built these for us, so we were actually able to use that intercompany. And all these little racks that you see there, that's actually where over 900 individual lithium-ion 180-pound batteries will be inserted, and that's actually what's housing your energy to be able to, you know, sell it back to the utility. So that will weigh over 250,000 pounds when it's set on its piers in tow. So each one of those buildings will provide about 2.7 megawatts of energy to the utility. So this is just our, you know, normal thing we like to end with, is we really do try to focus on safety. We've had two streaks of over 300 days without recordable injuries. We're currently at 126 days without a recordable injury, so we don't like to give the hospital any revenue, sorry, from that side of it, but no, really do want to try and take care. We have a dedicated EH&amp;S manager on site. We don't take that lightly. We really do care about the employees from that side of it. Pretty solid training program, we can always be better, there's always another level, if you've heard me say that before. And ultimately, you know, the one thing that's really not on these slides is, you know, we do quarterly bowling events where we take the entire team bowling there at the local bowling alley. We had our family picnic out at the farm, the pumpkin patch, is that what it's called? Yeah, pumpkin patch, we did that last month. We're doing a Christmas party at some venue that I signed a contract for, I can't remember the name of it, but we do really do try to engage with our employees. So this isn't a business guy standing up here, it's just somebody just trying to make sure people's families, you know, have that future. So if there's any questions, Blake will be. No? Anything?
We're lucky to have you here in Pittsburgh.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And you're hiring.
Yeah, no, it's, it is, it's really, you know, I like this, I'm from a small town in Missouri. I really like small towns like this, so it's fun to work in the area, so I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, very informational.
So, Madam Mayor, now we would, obviously, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. If not, there would be a public hearing, and then, Henry can correct me if I'm wrong, but if there's, if that's approved tonight, then we would bring back an ordinance for your consideration that would essentially finalize the exemption.
Okay, so I just need to open the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, open the public hearing. If there's anybody who would like to speak, come forward. Right seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. So is there any discussion amongst commissioners? All right, do I have a motion to approve?
To move.
Moved by Don and Doc, seconded by Don and Doc. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion passes. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
All right, consider the following. Villas at Creekside update debt and mortgage subordination agreement. Consider the recommendation of the EDAC to approve an updated debt and mortgage subordination agreement between Arvest Bank, the Villas at Creekside LLC, and the city of Pittsburgh as the Villas at Creekside project loan has increased.
All right, good evening again, Madam Mayor. Back in 2021, February of 2021, the city commission approved a $750,000 repayable loan that supported the Villas at Creekside project, and as the city typically does, took a second position on that behind Arvest Bank, which was the primary financing agent. And so that's formalized in what's called a subordination agreement, and within that subordination agreement, it lists the amount of the Arvest loan along with the city's loan. And if for any reason, once those, that subordination agreement is finalized, if either one of those loan amounts change, then it requires a new subordination agreement. So we were notified by Arvest a couple of weeks ago that they plan to put more money into the project, so that does require a new subordination agreement, but I want to make sure everybody understands that this is not more money from the city. Arvest Bank is the one that is increasing their loan, but it does necessitate a new subordination agreement. So this was already, this was also considered by the EDAC last week, and they recommended approval, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you would have.
This is the third request.
The second time we came back to you, Commissioner, was to alter the repayment schedule to provide a six-month delay for them to begin repaying their city loan.
Am I thinking of the wrong place? I thought there were three, this will be the, wait a minute, let me look at this. Yeah, they've had two previous mortgages, this will be the third mortgage essentially, totaling $10,210,000. Is that right? So the city, what I'm asked, I guess the question is, where's the city's position on this? Should they, should something happen in the future?
Second. Yes, sir. Yes.
Move to approve.
Any other discussion, anyone? Any more questions? Okay, moved by Stu. Do I have a second?
Both.
Seconded by Ron. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, item B on consider the following. Resolution number 1256, consider adoption of resolution number 1256 authorizing amendment to the indenture of trust relating to $8,640,000 industrial bond revenue, excuse me, industrial development revenue bonds, series 2017A and 2017B Kendall Packaging Corporation project, issued on January 25th of 2017, and authorize the execution of related documents.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is just an amendment to transition from using an index rate that they currently are to a different index rate called SOFR, which is an overnight treasury that's more risk-free for them. It does not change anything with the city, it's just the bond itself, so.
So this was a result of a request, a request by Kendall Packaging?
Correct, yes. It was just an option that they could adjust their index rate.
Okay.
And they chose to do that.
Move to accept.
All right, motion by Ron, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Stu. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Larissa. All right, ordinance number S-1089. Consider the approval of ordinance number S-1089 fixing the salary and compensation of the officers and employees of the city of Pittsburgh, Kansas.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is an ordinance that is brought to you towards the end of every year after the budget is passed to look forward to next year and our salary ordinances and our pay structure. So the only changes in it were the 2% for the, for each grade, the 2% cost of living that was approved with the budget. So each grade was adjusted 2%, and then the stipend positions were adjusted the 4%, which is the cost of living and the merit that was approved with the budget. So other than that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
A couple of the things that we went over earlier, would you be able to explain some of the slides that we talked about earlier as far, you know, as the percentages? And I'm not looking right at them right now, but I know that we were concerned about not understanding all the information completely and was asking for you to send us some more information, and I was interested in knowing more about it. And I would move that we table it for two weeks until the next meeting so you could get us the slides from before and be able to look at it more. I know that when, since we received this on Friday, we were gone for the weekend to the league meetings, and I'd like a little more time to look everything over.
Yeah, the salary ordinance doesn't take that into consideration. They're not the same, but we can certainly do that.
Oh, okay, hold on here.
The salary ordinance is just the, the grades that are adjusted, the 2% with the cost of living.
That was already in the budget, that was adopted last.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, it's, it's separate and different, what we talked about at the...
Okay, so this is different?
Yes.
I would move to approve this.
Second.
Okay, we have a, moved by Stu, seconded by Ron, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Let's see here. Non-agenda reports and requests. Darren?
Uh, just thanks to all of you, with the exception of Dawn, who had other things going on, for going to Overland Park for two and a half days of all things you wanted to know about Kansas cities and elected officials and their responsibilities, I hope you found it useful, and, um, as I went around, Tammy and Jay also went down, and it was nice to hear people say, wow, Pittsburgh's really got a lot of people here, taking an interest, and, um, just appreciate you all taking time.
It's a good time. All right, anyone else have any?
I have something.
All right?
Um, I think several of us have been invited to participate with Pittsburgh State University on their, um, Transaction Advisory Committee.
Transition.
Transitional, transaction, transitional, thank you. TAC is what they're calling it. Uh, we've been meeting every Tuesday morning, and, um, this morning Darren and Jay and Blake gave a great overview of, um, Pittsburgh community and, and the partnerships, um, with PSU that, you know, helps, uh, that have helped ours, us prosper, but I wanted to share with, um, Chuck and Cheryl the, the PowerPoint that they presented, because it has a lot of good information, which we've seen before, but, um, anyway, congratulate them, and thank you for representing us so well this morning.
Thank you.
I have something, Cheryl, I'd, uh, with the recent announcement of our Fire Chief resigning, I would just like to take this time and honor the 20 dedicated Fire Department employees that have left in the past two years because of the, uh, leadership of our Fire Chief. I know several of them worked with several of them, very good, hard-working people, and fortunately, because of what they had to deal with the past two years, they have decided to leave the employment of the city. I just wanted to make sure they knew how much I appreciated them.
All right, all right, and I'd like to end it with here. I'd, uh, I'd like to make a motion for the governing body, Darren Hall and Henry McGinn to go into executive session for a period of 45 minutes for the purpose to discuss public safety pursuant to personnel matters of non-elected personnel according to KSA The open meeting will resume in this commission room in 45 minutes, is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Again, before we get to that point for discussion, um, have you discussed with Darren and Henry the purpose of going in executive?
I've talked to Darren about this.
Okay, all right, that's all I wanna know.
So, did I, I lost the, the count here. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? All right, we're gonna go into executive session.
All right. We are back from the executive session. No votes were cast, no decisions were made. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Ron, seconded by Chuck. All those in favor say aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Everyone have a good evening. Thank you.